...meeting. Glad to see everybody here. Hope there's seats for everybody. At some point they'll clear up a little bit, but so. Before the meeting starts, I'd like to recognize Bonnie Nair, who's our new board person, who will be seated in January. So you can do the parade wave. So she'll be down here sooner than you think. Okay.
Goodright.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Austin.
Here.
Kuzma.
Here.
Kleinhens.
Here.
Hey, please stand for the pledge. Typically, there's a flag right over here, so.
It's around the corner.
Around the corner. All right. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the November 18th, 2025 board agenda as presented and amended.
So moved. Second.
Amendments.
Kleinhens.
Yes.
Kuzma.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Goodright.
Yes. We need a motion to approve the minutes of the October 13th, 2025 work session and October 21st, 2025 Board of Education regular session.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Starcher.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Kleinhens.
Yes.
Kuzma.
Yes.
Goodright.
Yes. Okay, now we're going to move into our favorite part of the evening, and that will be our student recognitions.
All right, hello. Oh, are we? Bueller? Oh, yep, we're good. All right, so my name is Heidi Haas. I'm the principal at Edgewood Middle School, and I am not used to going first, so this is kind of a whole new world, but we picked two great kids to go first tonight. The reason we're going first is because they are both in the orchestra and they have a concert tonight at Edgewood, so they gotta zip out of here and get their instruments tuned and ready to roll. So we are going to first start with Ms. Ava. So Ava, if you want to come stand next to me. And she is here with her dad, Cody Ut, mom Chrissy Ut, brother Evan, and sister Julia, if you want to give a wave. All right, Ava, are you ready to be bragged about? Okay, here we go. And her teacher, Mrs. Nightig, is here to say some things about Ava.
Good evening. Ava is a quiet leader in our fifth grade classroom. Her peers look up to her because she is outstanding and has an outstanding work ethic in the classroom, and she shows kindness towards all others. She has a positive attitude towards school and advocates for her learning by asking questions to demonstrate her understanding at all times. She is a joy to have in class, and she is great at balancing her orchestra life as well, as she's headed out of here tonight, right after we're done. That is why we chose Ava to be recognized by the Board of Education for her excellence both in and out of the classroom. Congratulations, Ava. We are so proud of you.
What instrument do we play? Awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, congratulations, Ava. And next up, we have Teddy Poulsen, and he's joined by mom Shannon, dad Larry, and brother Reed, if you guys want to give a shout out. All right. All right, come on up. All right. Teddy is joined by his teacher, Mrs. Capitosta, who is going to brag about him. Are you ready to go? All right.
Teddy is a dedicated fifth grader who gives 100% effort in all areas of his academics. He is a welcoming, kind-hearted student who leads by example. Teddy also always has a smile that is contagious to both his classmates and teachers. That is why we chose Teddy to be recognized by the Board of Education for his excellence both in and out of the academic classroom. Congratulations, Teddy. We are so proud of you.
Congratulations.
Good evening, community members, members of the board. My name is Gabrielle Montgomery. I have two incredible students to share with you this evening. The first I have with me is Landon. Landon Bagby. He is joined by his parents, mom Charlotte and dad Michael, and little brother Camden, if you would like to wave to be recognized. Landon is a first grade student at Cornerstone, and his teacher, Mrs. Shadwell, is not able to join us this evening, but it is my pleasure to share her nomination with you this evening. So Mrs. Shadwell says, "Landon has made tremendous progress this year. This is my second year having the privilege of having Landon in my classroom, and watching him grow has been one of the most rewarding experiences of my career. This year, he has gained so much independence, knowledge, and confidence, and built wonderful friendships along the way. He never fails to make the staff smile. His quirky personality and quick wit ensure there is never a dull moment in our room. Landon has grown in so many ways. He has gone from needing someone to hold his hand throughout the day to confidently walking independently everywhere he goes. He now participates with his first grade peers and is successfully engaging in OG, Hegarty, and writing activities, and we can see him expanding into other parts of the first grade day. We are so proud of the incredible growth he has made. He is a wonderful addition to any room he enters, and we are so excited to see what else he can accomplish." Congratulations, Landon.
Always, oh. Always the screens. Yeah. Yeah? He'd love to see him.
All right, my second Cornerstone student this evening is Hudson Phillips. He is also a first grade student. He is joined tonight by his mom Asia and dad Christopher, if you would like to wave to be recognized. Congratulations. And his teacher, Ms. Jensen, is here tonight to share his nomination.
Hello. So Hudson is an absolute rock star each and every day at school. Each time he walks through the door, he brings a calm focus and readiness to learn that immediately sets a positive tone for the day. He listens attentively, he follows directions beautifully, and consistently puts forth his very best effort. He has many teachers in his day, and we've all noticed how hard he works, not only on academic tasks, but also participating fully during discussions and activities. He approaches every part of his day with enthusiasm and purpose, and it shines through everything he does. One of the most impressive things about Hudson this year has been his tremendous growth. He's made incredible strides, both academically, socially, and in his overall confidence. You can see it in the way he volunteers to answer questions, the pride he takes in completing work independently, and the independence he continues to build each day. His time in the gen ed classroom has been such a wonderful opportunity for him to show what he knows, and he rises to the occasion again and again. I am so proud of how far you've come, Hudson, and I'm even more excited about where you're headed. Your hard work and determination are opening doors for you, and I cannot wait to continue watching you grow. With your strong work ethic and positive attitude, there is simply no limit to what you can achieve. Good job, Hudson.
Good job, Hudson. Good job. There we go. Good job. Good job. There you go.
All right, good evening. My name is Darren Nash. I'm the principal at Keane Elementary. Members of the board, thank you for this opportunity tonight. Superintendent Tudor, we're excited to honor both of our students, Sarice Oswald and Brayden Vitale. But before I turn the time over to their teachers, I would like to recognize Sarice's parents, Mr. and Mrs. Oswald. Can you guys stand and wave for us? And also like to recognize Brayden's parents, Mr. and Mrs. Vitales, and Brayden's grandparents, if you could, guys could wave. Thank you, Ms. Jones and Ms. Anderson, for just taking the extra time to come be with us tonight. So we'll turn the time over to you.
I am thrilled to introduce Sarice as my board nominee general of the month. Sarice has taken on second grade like a true superstar, working hard, staying determined, and shining bright in everything she does. Sarice and I love spending our breaks singing Taylor Swift together. She absolutely loves to sing, and music has become such a powerful tool for her. Not only does it bring her joy, but it helps her feel her best. And thanks to her, I now have a whole new playlist. Sarice has made tremendous growth in managing her frustrations and expressing her emotions in positive ways, proving that just like Taylor Swift, she can shake it off and keep growing every day. Her intelligence, kindness, and fun spirit make her such a joy to work with. Seeing her walk past my room and pop her head in and wave is always such a bright spot in my day. Sarice, we are so proud of you and all the progress that you've made. Keep shining, keep singing, and keep being the superstar that you are.
Congratulations. Can I shake your hand or not? Thank you. Congratulations.
It is my pleasure to nominate Brayden Vitale for student of the month. He is a walking example of positivity, responsibility, and kindness in our classroom community. From the moment he walks in each day, Brayden brings a joyful attitude and a can-do spirit. He eagerly takes on classroom responsibilities with pride, serving as our class secretary, food coordinator, librarian, and a valuable member of our tech team. No task is too big or too small. He jumps in with a smile and leads by example. Not only is he hardworking and dependable, but he also shows tremendous character. He learns from his mistakes, is a great sport during his favorite games at recess, like Gaga ball and tetherball. He constantly encourages his classmates, whether it's helping a friend, organizing supplies, or solving a tough problem. Brayden faces every challenge with enthusiasm and perseverance. He truly puts first things first and gives his best in everything he does. His love of learning, leadership skills, and kind heart make him an exceptional role model in our school. I am so proud of all he has accomplished so far, and I can't wait to watch him continue to shine throughout second grade.
Congratulations.
All right. Good evening. My name is Jamie Tucker. I'm the principal at Melrose Elementary. I have two second grade students to recognize tonight. The first is Calvin Smith, who's here with mom Ashley, dad Wilson, sister Nana, papa, and grandpa, if you want to wave to be recognized. Calvin's teacher, Mrs. Chelf, is unable to be here, so I'm going to read her nomination. Calvin is a true example of a genuinely kind second grade leader. His heart is pure gold. He shows kindness and warmth to all his classmates. He always seeks to understand and considers others' feelings. He eagerly takes time to help a friend in need or give someone a hug. Calvin lights up our classroom with his smile every single day. Congratulations, Calvin.
There's the smile.
Our next student is Bryn Duttweiler, who's here with mom Amber, sister Mila, and brother Easton, if you can wave to be recognized. Bryn's teacher, Mrs. Buchholz-Judel, was also unable to be here tonight, so I'm going to read her nomination. Bryn is a kind and thoughtful student who consistently goes out of her way to help others. Whether she's finding the right page in a classmate's math workbook, offering help with a tricky problem, or lending a hand as friends pack up at the end of the day, Bryn's kindness shines through in everything she does. She is a hardworking student and a wonderful role model for her peers, but it's her caring nature that makes her truly special. Congratulations, Bryn. You make our classroom a better place.
Wonderful, Bryn.
Good evening. My name is Katie Roth. I'm the principal of Parkview Elementary, and I have two excellent students from our school today to be recognized. The first is Kiaren Horton. He is here with his family, if you want to wave to be recognized. He's joined by Mrs. Hofstadter, who's here to share his nomination.
All right. Tonight, I would like to recognize Kiaren for his many accomplishments so far in kindergarten, as well as his amazing leadership in our classroom. I asked some of Kiaren's friends what they liked about Kiaren, and here are just a few of their responses. Dawson said, "I like to play with Kiaren," and Willow said, "Kiaren is a friend to everyone." So when Kiaren grows up, he wants to be a dad, which speaks so highly of his fam-- sorry. And how special they are to him. Kiaren is a very hardworking student. He came into kindergarten not knowing many letters and sounds, and now he recognizes so many letters and sounds that we make in our alphabet, right? He has a desire to learn. He is the first one to the carpet and sits eager to learn the new thing. Kiaren is an author and an illustrator. His stories that he writes are all about his family and how precious they are. He writes about his time with his sisters and going to Ramsayer Farms with his favorite people. He has excelled in math, too, as he counts numbers each day and learns about 2D and 3D shapes. A few weeks ago, we had a new student join our class, and without a doubt, I knew the best place to seat this new student was right beside Kiaren. He has helped our new student find materials, understand our procedures and rules, and has modeled for him what it looks like to learn in our classroom environment. Kiaren is a leader. One of my favorite memories of Kiaren this year has to be the times when he sneaks his Dino stuffy into his bookbag without mom knowing. Dino has helped our classroom make applesauce, watching the crock pot to make sure it never became too overcooked. He has read with Kiaren during our quiet, independent reading times, and he is learning right alongside Kiaren. He has the imagination of a five-year-old, Kiaren does, and that's just one of the many things that make him so special to me. Kiaren, you're off to a great start. I can't wait to see what the rest of this year brings.
Our next student here to be recognized is Zane Lacrone, a fourth grade student. He's joined by his family, if you want to wave to be recognized. Mr. Crooks is Zane's teacher, here to share his nomination.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to recognize our fiscal education student of the month at Parkview, Zane Lacrone. He's a fourth grader. Zane is a student who truly stands out, not only for his athletic ability, but for his character. In our PE classes, Zane consistently demonstrates the habit, begin with the end in mind. He sets goals, works hard every day to improve, and encourages others to do the same. Whether we're practicing team sports or skill-building challenges, Zane gives his best effort and helps his classmates stay focused and do their best. What really sets Zane apart is his respectfulness. He listens attentively, follows directions the first time, and shows kindness to all the students he works with. He's the kind of teammate who makes others better simply by being a great example. Zane represents what we hope to see in all our students, a combination of dedication, positive leadership, and respect. We're proud to recognize him as our PE student of the month. Congratulations, Zane. Keep up the great work.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Margaret Davis. I'm the principal at Worcester High School. It is my honor to introduce our two students tonight. The first is Daniel Lux Castro. He's joined tonight by his brother Manuel and sister-in-law Maria, if you want to wave. And then here to speak on his behalf is his teacher, Andrea Ellerbrock.
Good evening. I have had the pleasure of working with Daniel as his English language teacher for almost two and a half years. And in my job, each time I get a new student, I think to myself that never, even for a day, have I ever been as uncomfortable or unsure of myself as new students are in those first days in US schools. It is difficult to express how much courage it takes for a young person who does not speak our language to walk in the buildings here at Worcester City Schools. It takes true strength to face that fear, and Daniel did that with positivity and perseverance. In addition to learning a new language, multilingual students often need to overcome challenges that come with attending schools in other countries whose educational systems look very different from our own. Difficulties often arise when students' prior knowledge does not mirror the students in our schools, and this can be very discouraging. Success can feel almost unattainable. Daniel did not let these challenges stop him. He has persevered through difficulty with true determination and commitment to showing up with his best. When he understood very little, he kept trying. When he struggled, he asked for help and tried again. Daniel is an incredible example of what can be accomplished when we keep a growth mindset and improve little by little each day. Daniel, I know it has not been easy, and I'm so happy to see you thriving this year. You have grown so much as an English learner and in all your classes, especially math. I wasn't the only teacher that nominated Daniel. His algebra teacher also nominated him, and the strides he's taken in math are incredible. Manuel and family, I know you are truly proud and will share this honor with the rest of your family in Guatemala. Congratulations, Daniel. Keep working. I'm proud of your success.
Our second student tonight is Dylan Newberry-Yoakley. She's joined here tonight by dad David and mom Laura, if you guys want to wave. So Dylan was nominated by her art teacher, Ms. Newsbaum, who's extremely sick. She's very upset she can't be here tonight, but she sent me something to read on her behalf. She says, "Well, first, I wish I could give Dylan a huge hug right now, but as they say, the show must go on. I've only known Dylan for two years as my student, yet in that time, I've witnessed incredible personal growth, not only as an artist, but as a young lady as well. Dylan is one of the most naturally skilled creators I've had in my classroom. She can brainstorm, draw, paint, print, sculpt, build, manipulate, and cut paper. And boy, can she cut that paper. I've witnessed a spark in Dylan this year that was missing before. She began cutting letters and shapes, layering them onto a painting that was underneath. I'm guessing she loved this process since she didn't have to glue it down right away, but instead she could continue making options until she saw the perfect combination. This first project inspired yet another mixed media piece that includes cut paper. Watching the intricate, colorful, and symbolic shapes growing and changing from her mind's eye is quite the sight to see. Her once quick-to-finish assignments have turned into thought-provoking, colorful works of imagination and skill. Anyway, to say that I'm proud of Dylan is an understatement. She's become a leader in class, as well as an art club, with her hilarious sarcastic wit and also her tender, thoughtful side, where she takes care of things when needed. I'm blessed to have had the opportunity to be your teacher, Dylan. I can only imagine where your gifts will take you, but no matter where you are, there will certainly be beauty surrounding you because you've created it." Congratulations.
Okay, so this is always our perfect segue. If you have something else to do this evening, if you're here just for the recognitions, this would be the time that you can go eat dinner or do what you got to do. Thanks for coming. Okay, now we're going to move on to section 4.01, and that'll be a presentation from our superintendent on facilities. All right, thank you, Mr. Goodright. Excited to share with you guys this evening some of the things we've been working on related to some facility options. And so I'll just go ahead and get started to keep us on time here. So I think first, just a couple things. The next couple slides will be a little bit--
to talk about on the next page in terms of what that plan was. But really, the result tonight is to provide options for you, kind of based on previous feedback, some factors related to school funding at both, really both the local and state level, our current expenses and our financial forecast, which Amy's went over in the last few months, and our focus on long-term planning to continue to strengthen our district moving forward. So what I'm going to show you tonight is I'm going to review the previous facilities plan that was the bond issue of May 2025, and then I'm going to provide five different facility options for you this evening with some cost estimates and things that we could, you know, further consider. So the first is to review the May ballot issue. We were proposing a new middle school, a six-through-eight building on the high school campus. That was going to be on the north side of Oldman, more closer to Milltown than it would be Oldman Road. We were going to use egress there at Oak Hill and also at Milltown. The cost was $67 million. That included inflation contingency, purchase of land, and the building itself, and the middle school athletic facility as well, which was $3 million of that $67 million. If you remember even going farther back, in May of 2023, we attempted a bond issue as well. At that time, it was two buildings, a building at Cornerstone's campus to be a K-2 building, and the middle school that you see here. So basically, this option was like half of the first option. We anticipated if we would have passed, we would have opened that new middle school in 2028. It was about $3.4 mils is what it was going to cost the taxpayer. We were going to receive funding from the OFCC as a part of that contribution. We are eligible for 31%. However, that 31% is of kind of the lowest common denominator of space, so anything you build, anything larger than their space, it doesn't end up equating to 31%, but it was a substantial portion. And after that was going to happen, you were going to have K2 at Keene, Melrose, and Parkview. You were going to have 3, 4, 5 at Edgewood, 6 through 8 at the new middle school, and a 9 through 12 high school. All right? So obviously, that plan did not pass, so tonight I'm going to show you some additional options that we have been kind of working with to consider, but I think it's important for context to kind of remember where we came from. So I think to frame this well, I think it is important to kind of think about why this conversation is important. I think the first thing is, as I've said really since, you know, the May election, is that our facility needs didn't go away as a result of that outcome. It just was not that, that's not what the community wanted to be the solution. But our facilities continue to be in need of repair. I think we are to the point where we really can't postpone much longer making some significant decisions. As, you know, we'll talk about Cornerstone as one of these options, but really all of our buildings, as really the last few years as we've kind of attempted to pass some levies. We've done repair work, but we haven't done major renovation-type work in those buildings, and those will be needed if we are going to remain with our current facility fleet. Couple other things to factor in. We are now in deficit spending. We're on the backside of our operating levy cycle, so even though we're talking about facilities today, remember that a good portion of the money that is spent each year is actually on operating, keeping your lights on, keeping your people paid, your buses running. And so, you know, when you pass a levy, which we did in 2020, initially, you start, typically, you're bringing in more than you're spending each year. You never bring in more than the day you passed, if you're above the 20 mil floor, which is a whole nother conversation for today, but we did not receive obviously more money. So now, as inflation has risen, we are in a position where we're in deficit spending. That is a typical thing, something we expected. You know, our goal is obviously always to try to go as far as possible between operating levy ask, and so we are just on that, starting that downhill. I did receive, in some of the things I'm going to share with you this evening, I did receive good feedback. We had a finance committee this fall. We've had a BAC Facilities Committee as well that also I was able to share some of this information and get some feedback for you to consider. Okay, so moving on to the options. The first option would be what I would title "Cornerstone Major Repairs." We estimate, so I guess first I want to make sure that you understand what that means. That would be a pretty significant overhaul of the major systems and, you know, important components of the building. It is not, I do title it "repair," I don't think it's a renovation from the standpoint of the building will be the building. I mean, it is this, you know, in terms of like where people eat, where people go to class, the size of the classrooms, those kind of things wouldn't change, but it would get a new HVAC system, windows, full roof, plumbing improvements, electrical, lighting, ADA or handicapped accessibility, and safety improvements. Pretty much most of these things were included when we talked about this in the spring last year, and we talked about kind of the recommendations we did at that time, so really just kind of that punch list. In looking, it looks like about $34 million as inflation has risen, and the other thing that we're starting to factor in, and when we talk to some contractors, we would probably have to do most of this work in short stints, either over the summer or in the evening and weekends, and so we do think that could have an impact on labor as well, and that's because our kids still go to Cornerstone, and we're not going to be able to move the kids out of Cornerstone. So there are no OFCC or state funds available for this project at this time. Your timeline, we think that we could finish it at about two summers if you used temporary modulars, so we basically, if we moved in some, you know, double Y types for, kind of to the north of the school for a period of time, so that we could kind of move a group of kids out while we did a portion of the building. You could, in the end, in essence, two summers in the fact that you could use a little bit more of during-school year time if you did that process. If not, we probably think it would take about three summers at least to do that, just kind of chunking the different aspects of the project. We would have to fund this with, you could fund it with, remember, I know the board remembers, but public as well, we do have money in the bank right now. Now, obviously, that would, that impacts our five-year forecast, but we did move $23 million to an 070 account at the time when we thought that the state was going to make some cash balance changes. And so that, that $23 million in these options could be used, could be put back into a general fund, or could be a combination, right? That's kind of probably not the first step in the decision-making process. So we could do operating funds, so we have, I'm going to talk a lot about, I'm going to use COPS as an option or an example tonight. COPS means Certificate of Participation in schools. What it really means to all of you is a loan, right? It's a, it's a, it's a bond loan through a bank that would pay for, basically give money upfront, and then the district would pay a mortgage every year out of their operating funds for whatever you borrow from COPS, for whatever project you choose. That's what certificate of participation means. You could do a bond issue for this, which I estimate, based on that price, to be about $1.75 mils at this time. If you used our own money, all $23 million, we would probably be on the ballot for operating within two years, because if you use your $23 million, it's going to move us to the point where we would need operating sooner for any of these plans, right? Our redistricting plan, we, if you remember from last spring, we had a redistricting plan that we talked about that kind of depended on the levy result, really moving the kindergarten through second grades to Parkview, Melrose, and Keene. And then the third and fourth grade was going to go to Edgewood if we built a middle school, and if not, it was supposed to build at Cornerstone, right? So what I mean by this here is if we stay at Cornerstone, your redistricting plan is this way. Current redistricting plan would happen next school year, three K2s there, and third and fourth grade at Cornerstone. Your fifth through 12th grade would stay exactly the same as it is today. Okay? So that's option one, or it's labeled number two, but really only because I'm reminding you of the previous option that failed. All right? You guys can stop me at any point, or I'll just keep going through, and we can talk about all the options at the end, okay? However, whatever is most comfortable for you. Another option would be, and this would probably be the most financially conservative option, I will say it's somewhat of a Band-Aid from the standpoint, it doesn't probably do a lot of real long-term solutions, but it's the most affordable, so it is fair to at least put that as a consideration. This would be just to do some permanent improvements, really I would say the most essential only. If you remember in 2017, the district did a five-year PI levy to do some improvements at the high school, and then it didn't renew. It was a five-year process. That's kind of what I would envision here, basically, you know, using about $10 million to do some necessary repairs. At about $2 million a year, you could do a 2 mil levy for five years to do that, or you could use $10 million of your general fund, right? Or a combination. And then again, your impact when your next levy is really would depend on how much of that general fund that you used. If you didn't use your PI, you probably are in '28. I guess as a reminder, if, I think I may have said this, but just if we put our $23 million back into operating and didn't have any facility issues, it would probably be 2029, maybe 2030 that we would need to consider an operating levy, right? So anything that you see lower than that is because you're using some amount of general fund, right? If you did this plan, again, because Cornerstone would be in use in this plan, Cornerstone becomes the third and fourth grade, and the K2s are, you know, at Parkview, Melrose, and Keene as discussed in the previous plan. Yes, Joy?
I'm going to make sure, just to clarify, you made the comment, if we used no money at all from our general fund, we wouldn't be looking at an operating levy, '29, '30?
Yes.
That means all, that means whether we do COPS, whether we do a bond, whether...
Good question. If you do a long-term COPS, as you'll see in, it would depend, like COPS would impact that?
So that might be one year earlier.
Correct. It kind of depends on how much you borrow. It's the same, I always kind of say, it's like going and buy a house or buy a car, right? The more that you put down, the less you have in payment, but then the less cash you have on hand. I mean, there's pros and cons to every situation.
Indeed. Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Okay, so again, option one there, Cornerstone repair. Option two, just more like light repairs at each building. Option three, kind of total flip, would be the most expensive plan that I'm presenting tonight, and that would be a new K5 elementary. We estimate that to be about $85 million. I do want to say in a lot of these that I put "estimate," and that's because there is, there will be a lot of next-step work depending on the feedback that you guys give me on, you know, narrowing down these costs, you know, to create a, to create even a more specific. The architects are pretty good at it, but I did put "estimate" on purpose here, as right now I'm just trying to present the options. We can go much more granular when needed. So this would, this building could go on either side, probably would need to go where the middle school is going to go on the north side of Oldman, just because it would house six grades, so it would be a very large building. You know, we had talked about long-term in additional phases, years and years down the road, that maybe an elementary would be appropriate on the south side of Oldman there on the Keene Fields, so you could explore that. But again, I'm not sure if, you know, with six grades, it's going to be a pretty significant-sized building. That would be today about a $4.6 million property, or mil, not million dollar, mil property tax. You also, I'm sharing for the first time, we've never really talked about an income tax. An earned income tax specifically is only for people that are still earning, so it kind of protects senior citizens on a fixed income. There are pros and cons to any income tax. One is the income will determine how, the people's income, and determine how much you get, so it's more varied than a property tax where you can more greatly assume exactly what you're going to receive every year. The other thing, if you go with an earned income tax, you do put more burden on the income earners, because in theory, you're trying to create the same amount of money, but you have less people as a part of it because those that are on a fixed income are not included in your collection, right? Again, those would be the, you know, things to factor in, but I think it was important to at least mention, knowing that, look, anything's on the table. And we also know there's some property tax reform conversations out there at the state level that we don't know exactly what might happen with property taxes long-term.
So with this plan, with this, for this K5 elementary, that means that we'd be vacating four elementaries.
Correct.
Which are all 60 years old or older, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, I think that's important, and I, you know, the, I guess, I mean, you know, there are cons of this plan, cost being one, your neighborhood schools that we've talked about in the past. Your pro is efficiency, and even though we have probably talked the most in the past, you know, five years at my time here about Cornerstone, the other three elementaries do need, do need services and help, right? They're in the 60s or 50s, and the reason we don't talk about it as much is because it's not as pressing and it's not as large, right? So they're not as expensive.
Do you feel like there's a cost savings in one site?
There is, for sure. Economies of scale hits here. You're, you'd have staffing, you'd have staffing savings, you would have energy savings, transportation savings in a K5. In the long run, it does have a lot of financial legs to it. It is just, it is just, again, the most expensive upfront cost that we're showing.
Right, 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 right. What was the cost of the, this is around, this one here is around 85?
The next building I'm going to show you is...
What was the cost of the middle school concept that we had last?
67.
67, okay.
Yeah. Middle, the reason I, as you'll see, why am I showing you options that are not the middle school? Again, I mean, I'm not against the middle school. I thought that was a, you know, a good, a good thing to consider, and we liked it right there on the high school campus. In terms of, now that we have to continue to think about what's the best here, and with financial restraints, a middle school costs more money per grade than the others because a middle school needs larger spaces, larger performing arts space, larger gym space, larger cafeteria. And so when I show you these options in terms of what you're getting per grade, you're paying less per grade in these options, so that's why I considered those.
Okay.
In terms of funding for this, you could use some of our general fund dollars. Again, it's not going to pay for all of it, but if you did, you could, kind of thinking about reducing or doing your down payment. If you do that, it would reduce your loan or levy request. I think here, it's not 100%. I think we could definitely evaluate possibilities, but the K5 would at least probably have more likelihood to need to consider a levy than the other options. All the options could consider a levy, or the options could not consider a levy, I think we, but I'm just saying this one being the most expensive would be something we'd have to explore. Redistricting, there would be no redistricting. Everybody would go to the same, the same site in grades K through 5 if you did this A 3 through 5, which is basically three grades, just like a 6 through 8, just looking at it instead of being a three-grade building, that's again, middle school, a little more expensive. Looking here, this, you could build on the south side of Oldman for sure, because it's only three grades, or you could build it, you could build it on the north side. I would envision probably, if you did just an intermediate, and in our, in our early planning, we would probably think about doing that right next to Keene there in Dean Davis. It's a $47 million estimate. It does, I didn't say this on the K5, that would be important as well. Both, both of these options would qualify for state contribution at the 31%. And so we would, you know, at 85 million, it's probably 73 to 75 million total. At 47 million, it's probably 40 million for us after the co-funding.
How much land do we own south of Oldman?
Probably total, if you include Keene as well, probably at least 30 acres. We own everything all the way back to the line of trees by the car streets, all the way over, including the field that, from part of the old Buchholz Farm to Oak Hill. We own the ravine. That was all part of the land given to us by the Noble Foundation a few years ago. way over, including the field that, from part of the old Buchholz Farm to Oak Hill. We own the ravine. That was all part of the land given to us by the Noble Foundation a few years ago.
Okay.
So, you know, timeline on this, again, I think depends, a little bit on any of these, depends on, well, when the decision's made, and then whether or not, where the money's coming from, right? So, for example, if we made a decision to do something without a levy, then you're sooner, because you're not waiting for the determinate outcome, right? If it's a levy, you're waiting until that. In general, a new building is going to take you between, probably, I would say, to be safe, three years. I think sometimes you can beat that, but it's going to probably take you three years to build a new building regardless of the scope that you would build, okay? Just like it would take, you know, probably three years unless you chose the modular option to repair Cornerstone, okay? And during, I will say, for any of the plans that required, like, that, if our redistricting plan changed because of the building plan, we would not redistrict until new, the buildings were changed. We're not going to move kids twice, right? So we'll only do the move if we're going to permanently stay in our current structure. At least that would be my recommendation to you. Funding for this, you can see a little under 2 mils for a property. You also could do a combo of earned income tax and property. Why did I show you that? Instead of just earned income tax, you only can do 0.25% increments. So, if I gave you a 0.5, we'd have more money than we asked for, right? So to make it exact, which you could consider that, but just to make it exact, that's why I put it on there. Or, I do think that you could pay for this building with general fund, using our 23 million, and a COPS loan, which would be for a little under 20 million. I'm going to show you the COPS loans rates and kind of the yearly figures on those on one of my last slides. And again, so your timing of future levies would continue to be dependent upon whether or not you would be using, you know, district current funds for that. So, you know, I mean, you could even do a combo, you could go out for a levy and do a COPS loan in that, and not use general fund. I mean, there's all kinds of different, you know, I really, my, my thought for you guys is, you know, funding and financing is an important part of any of these decisions. I don't think, I think the first step is just kind of, you know, feedback on, on where we want to maybe go, based on what do we want to explore more in terms of these options, and we can come back and give you a lot more details of financials, right?
On the, real quick, on the 2029 operating levy required if no general funds dollars used, that's assuming all of it paid for with the COPS loan. Is that wording correct?
That would be assuming that we did a levy. If you did a COPS loan, you might be 28, because you'd start paying
Yes.
your mortgage, right? It'd be late '28, early '29. And again, redistricting as a reminder, your K-2s would be what was planned in the 6 through 8s. Edgewood would stay a middle school. It would just be 6 through 8. As, as you, as you notice, a lot of these plans, at least the new building plans, do try to accommodate the 8th grade in a middle school, and the 9th grade, 9th through 12th grade at the high school, which was some feedback we got. And no immediate change would happen in this plan. Implementation would occur once a new building is built, okay? The last option, I guess maybe it's the most inexpensive, but it's, you know, maybe a little more, the other inexpensive one is just kind of some repairs, but it's, is to move to modulators or double-wide type trailers. If we did that, we would, you would move out of Cornerstone, and you would put 10 to 12 classrooms, so basically, each double-wide is two classrooms. They can put them together, like in a, like in one package, so it's not like you have, like, 2, 2, 2, 2. It can be one together. I'll show you that on the next page. Cost of that is 7, 8 million dollars. I would, if we went this direction, it would take about one year from implementation. So, for example, if this was done, at, you know, if this was decided this spring, it would be another year before we actually moved in, is, one, there's planning, there's a lot of kids movement and staff, and also, you still have to hook up water and electric and other things, but it's obviously faster than a new build, because it's prefab, right? I would not recommend paying for this with anything but our own money, so you wouldn't borrow or ask for that. So, it would impact the general fund a little bit, not as much as the other plans, but it would. We would, what would happen is, those other three elementaries would become K-4s, and the Cornerstone students would just be evenly distributed among those. I mean, we could look at other ways to distribute, but the most simple way would just be that the Cornerstone students are evenly distributed to then make three K-4s instead of four K-4s. Your 512 stays exactly the way it is if you went in this realm.
Do you lease those or buy those?
You can do either one.
What about the one at Keene?
We bought that one. Overall, most of the time, it makes more sense to purchase these if you're going to use them for anything of an extended period of time. If we used them at Cornerstone while we were building or renovating there, I would recommend, at that place, I would recommend lease, but I would not recommend lease here.
We know, I don't mean to ask too many questions, but on those modulators, do we know, what's the longevity? I mean, taking Melrose Modular, which is here now, out of the picture, like, what's the longevity on...
I mean, I think, I think you can use it for 10, 15 years without, without, I mean, you know, they're, they're not a 30, 40-year-old building, for sure, but they are made with, you know, decent construction. I mean, our anticipation, when we built, put the one at Keene, it was not something we were thinking would be, we would use it until we didn't need to use it. Now, a good example, Melrose is probably not a great example. We're not ever moving that one. That one's, but, yeah. There are, you know, in areas of the country where growth is exponential, and they can't build as fast as schools, and areas like the southwest and things, modulators are pretty common. You know, I don't know that they would even say it's ideal in those situations, whether it's more common than we see in northeast Ohio. Just to show you, so that's the end of the plans, but I want to show you a couple other things, or factors, and then I'll definitely take your questions. So, what I mean by modulators is what it would look like, is really, if you look, it's there at the top left. It's, you know, five or six classrooms, there is a restroom in it, and then, obviously, so they're, they're coming in and out of one door. There probably, there is more than one level area of egress, but most of the kids are going to come in from one place and then leave at the same one. That's, that's kind of what that would look like. So, you can do it where you just put double-wide, 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 but it's less cost-efficient, and I think we would want to make it, if we were going to go this route, which, you know, I don't know that we would want to, but if we, if we did, you would definitely want to, you know, put, I think, as many kids in there together, like a, like a school as possible. We did do, well, my, my instruction and special education team did a great job of at least figuring out, like, would we be able to fit the other large spaces? Would that, would they be able to hold our kids? Like, you know, could Keene have gym and lunch with those, with all of those, you know, additional kids? Because they'd each be getting a little over 125, 130 kids. We can do that. Challenging, but we can, we can do that with our current space. So, I think a couple other factors before I give you time for some questions that factor into a lot of these things to think about. So, remember, we are going to get co-funding from the OFCC. If we build, right? However, our current OFCC plan indicates that we're going to build a 6 through 8 middle school first, right? Well, unless you go with the plan that, you know, we failed before, and we choose that, and in some way pay for it and have it, we're going to have to change our master plan, okay? To a different segment, right? That is not hard, but it is important that you know that, because it does take time. Because there is a time clock on the OFCC, right? So, the OFC time clock is November of '26. When we received that certification, which we applied for well before the bond failed, but it got approved in July, we have 16 months from that time to use our money, or we become a lapsed district. It is possible for lapsed districts to get back in line and get money, but it takes a couple of years, and it would delay our co-funding option. So, I think that's important. When I say OFC master plan change, it's really that, we really have to November to change that, and I think really, because of the timing it takes, because it's kind of like a board, right? We have to submit it, then they have to approve it, send it back to us. We really probably have time for one master plan change. So, we can't try, like, multiple different things here, like, oh, let's try the K-5, and then if that doesn't work, we'll try, you know, this or that, like, we'll probably have one master plan change during that time, okay?
Is there some scope around the, the amount of change that can be made before it's still be valid, if that question makes sense?
So, as long as it fits within, remember, they're going to try to make you as efficient as possible, and, like, that's why there's so many K-12 campuses, right? And so, it just, it's, no, but there, how that 31% of actually translate into real dollars, the more efficient you make it, the more likely you're going to see closer to a 31%. You know, if we, like, if you built, I don't have this option up here, because I don't think we would, if we built a 7, 8, like a junior high, 7th and 8th grade junior high, we wouldn't get a lot of co-funding for that. We'd get some, right? But that's not an efficient model from the state of Ohio, with kind of the needs that we're talking about. Because remember, the OFCC plan actually only has one of our buildings staying, if they, because they look at this from like a 30-year-plus perspective, you know? The high school is the only building that they didn't say makes more sense to rebuild versus renovate, right? Again, not that we would be doing all of that right now, but, you know, from that state.
Yep, that was their perspective, yep.
So, with that point, is there a big difference in the K-3 versus K-5 from their co-funding perspective?
Exactly.
We would anticipate, we, again, we have, we have to resubmit for them to dive all into that, and I haven't done that, because again, I think we have time for one change. But, the K-5 will be looked at more favorably from an efficient standpoint from the state. Again, long run, it is the most efficient, cheap option. It's just the most expensive upfront, right? And then there are some other, you know, factors to think about, like neighborhoods and things like that, but from a cost standpoint, that's really your issue there.
So, like, on the 3, 5, with, to accept the OF, I don't know, OFCC or whatever it is, changes, but on that, my experience with that is, if they were to help, you know, to accept that and fund that, do they micromanage the other spaces in your building, buildings?
No, just the one that they're building at the time. Now, they do factor in your space when they tell you...
Their other spaces.
Yes, they factor that in, and when they tell you, like, whether, like, so, for example, if we had all new buildings right now, they wouldn't give us money, because they would say, you don't need new space, right? Or if we had another building out there, they would, they might say that you need to rebuild or renovate, but they wouldn't say you're going to run out of space, right? So, they do factor in your other space, but they don't get in the weeds of what's happening in those spaces. They do get in the weeds of what happens in the building that they're co-funding, right? I mean, there's, you know, that's, that's just part of it, but I, I think I couldn't, I couldn't recommend not using their money if we were going to.
Is that involvement pretty specific to room sizes, cafeteria sizes?
There is a, there is a framework that you have to do, that's OFCC. You can go beyond it. You can't go less than that, right? So, for example, they have a gym size that you have to do. You can do bigger than that, but you can't do smaller, right? There is a certain level of HVAC efficiency you have to use. You could do better than that. You would just pay the whole percentage yourself, not get the co-funded. That's what local, that's what LFI is, locally funded initiative, right? So, for example, Triway's a great example of this, right? They have a co-funded building, K-12, they definitely liked that. Like, the state liked that. That beautiful performing arts center they have, though, they got no money for that, right? That was paid for all by Triway, which is fine, they decided to do that, but that's not part of a, you know, a requirement of an OFCC building. So, that's one thing I think is important on a timeline. Another timeline is a bond, right? So, I'm not saying that any of these decisions have to go out for a bond, but I think you do need to understand the timeline of a bond if you would so choose. So, I'm going to actually move to the next slide, because all of these things come up on the next one. So, for example, if you chose May, and I'll tell you both, I'll tell you why November's to think about as well. If you chose May, you have to have all, there's two, no matter what, no matter whether you're asking for $10 or 10, you know, $100 million, you have to have two resolutions passed that are kind of formally set in a specific way to get on the ballot. They have to be at two different meetings, and the second one has to be done, what is it, 98 days, Amy, from, I think 98 days from election day, right? So, if you did a May ballot, you would have to do a resolution in December and a second one in January, and that would have to be submitted to the Board of Elections by January 27th, okay? If you did a November, hey, it's more like July and August. Now, we can do either. I do think, but I do want you to know that the only reason I put May, and I, I mean, I, again, I don't even know if we're going to go out for something, but I think the reason I factored this in for you is that if you go out in November and pass, well, that's fine, but if you go out in November and fail, you would not have time to gather your finances and still ensure co-funding. If you go out in May and failed, you would, you wouldn't have time to change your plan, right? So, like, for example, if you said, we're going to build a 3, 4, 5, right? And it failed, and you chose to do it anyway, which, again, I don't know that we would do any of these things. I'm just trying to make sure you understand the decisions you're making in the timeline. You would be able to probably go and get your bank financing and things like that before the November deadline. You would not be able to do that if you waited till November, right? So, I just think that's important to know, you know, obviously, regardless of what decision you make. Now, again, if you don't go out for a levy, this timeline becomes a little easier, right? If you, if you're not, whatever you decide to do, if you're going to do an option that doesn't even worry about co-funding from the state, or if you're going to do an option, but you know you don't need a bond to do it, you have more flexibility. Your least flexible timeline is if you are going to try to build a building with a levy and get it figured out by November. Does that make sense? To help you understand the COPS repayment option, again, this is definitely an estimate, as these things change literally every day, but just as a kind of safe amount, because I, I think, you know, the thing that I, I definitely was like, well, what does a payment look like when you start borrowing this kind of money? Assuming a 30-year interest rate, basically, and so just so you kind of understand what COPS is, it's a bond. Like, when you pass a bond, the only difference between a bond and COPS is, in a bond, the taxpayers are paying it through the approved funds, right? It's technically still a loan that investors get, and, you know, and based on the, you know, the market rate, where COPS is, the district is just taking that with current funds, right? So, but you can see there, like, from 10 million, on a 30-year is about $650,000 of annual payment, all the way up to 80 million, which is over 5 million per, you know, per year. So, what that really means is, guys, is whatever, if you did any kind of COPS loan, that's what you're impacting the general fund by every year, right? For a long time.
Is there a way to understand, without putting anyone on the spot in any way, and I mean that very sincerely, to understand, like, what...
You can put me on the spot, Joy, it's okay.
What kind of percentage is 5.2 of the, like, this is a payment. If we go COPS, and I have other questions, but just for this slide, if we go COPS, we're paying. Is there a way to understand what size of a payment 5.2 mil is out of our budget every month, year?
60 million dollar budget.
It'd be about 10%.
Five.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
A little, a little under 10%, about 8%.
So, 8% is fair?
That's on a current 60 million dollar budget, which does increase every year, typically because of inflation.
Understood. So, so, just to clarify, if we would take an 80 million dollar loan out, we would be paying 8% of our operating fund annually, monthly?
For 30 years.
Thank you. Just want to make sure I understood that.
I mean, now, just like your own house, you can make more payments than that, and go faster, right?
Oh, of course, yes, yes.
But, yeah, if you don't, that's what you're doing for a long time.
That, that, right. So, what kind of a hit that is to...
Correct.
Indeed.
Yes. So, that's all, you know, that's all a factor here, is you kind of start thinking about, you know, those things. I am almost done, and then I'll answer more questions here. I have not talked about the preschool, and I think it's important that I do share with you the preschool, where it would go. If the new, if no new building is built, preschool's going to stay at Cornerstone, right? If we stay at Cornerstone, preschool will stay at Cornerstone. The preschool area is more, is more newly renovated than the rest of the building, and so that would be where we'll, we'll stay. If modulators are used, initially, we would keep the preschool at Cornerstone, until we found a more appropriate long-term location, which could, could be, you know, modulators themselves, could be an add-on to one of our elementaries, or even more outside the box, could be, you know, like, renovating a building like Dean Davis or something like that, which, again, we have not done a lot of exploration in, but... which again, we have not done a lot of exploration in, but you know, those are the kind of things that you could put on the table, right? Um, but again, initially, it would stay at Cornerstone. If a new school was built, uh, preschool's location would still be determined, because I think it really depends on what building you build too, right? Um, a little bit, uh, you know, if you build a K-5, you know, um, I, I think possibly in my head, and this is way far down the road, but I, I think Keene would make me be an appropriate place for possibly the preschool. Uh, Keene is definitely the newest and best in shape of those three elementaries. It would still need some renovation work. Um, you know, if you were using Keene, um, you know, we'd have to continue to do some more investigation of like if you're using those three elementaries where we would put preschool. So that's kind of the, the gist, and, and I will tell you, there are other options, right? I mean, we could, we could, I could give you another 10, right? I mean, it would just take some time, right? But these were ones that I felt were, you know, appropriate from the standpoint of the levy failure and interest, um, and also maybe kind of looking in a different lens on a building project than what we had kind of been focusing on, um, you know, the last few years with, um, you know, with our levies ask. Yeah, Joy?
Just being very black and white and just trying to understand. So in any building plan, whether it was the 6 to 8, the K through 5, or the 3 to 5, we could self-fund.
Could.
But then we would pay the, go ahead, yes, please.
Good question. We could definitely self-fund the 3-5. I don't know if we could self-fund it.
Self-fund plus COPS.
Yes, and correct, all of those, nothing is, the only thing that would be truly self-fund is we could self-fund modulars.
Indeed, I'm sorry, that was my ear.
Like basic permanent improvements.
So for 6, 8, K-5, 3-5, we could self-fund plus COPS?
Yes.
And I don't, I don't mean to be stupid, but then we are paying the entire bill?
Correct.
For the deal of not having a levy.
If you don't go out for a levy.
Right, so like we're saying, okay, we won't have a levy because nobody likes levies. So we're going to pay more money ultimately to just not have a levy because we're paying the whole thing and we're losing our percentage of funding from OFCC. Is that silly of me to ask that way?
You're paying your interest. Now, technically, a bond that's passed also still has interest because in the end, the same process happens.
Well, okay, then, so what is the difference between, yes, okay.
I want to add one thing. Joy, you would still get the OFCC funding if you did the COPS loan, so.
That's what I'm asking.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
No, 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 I often am not clear.
The state of Ohio does not care how you are financing your money. They just want to make, they, they're, they need to know that you have your money. So they're either going to need to see evidence of a levy passed or evidence of an approved loan through a financial institution.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, Joy, I didn't.
No, that's my ear.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
So this, um.
Thank you.
Cornerstone conversation has been going on for a while, long time, long, long time. 34 years ago, Worcester's Board of Education decided that that building wasn't good for kids. So then they decided to build the new high school, which is 30 years old, it's not new anymore. At that point, Cornerstone Elementary was going to be razed. There was an injunction filed, they kept it, they closed other buildings, Leighton, Bell Avenue, Grant Street School, which they repurposed into the Opportunity School because that was one of the newer parts that was still left down there. So, I mean, that's a long time ago. When I was in high school, when the mayor and I were in high school, uh, we were close friends with the superintendent at that time, Dave Rathbone. Part of Dave's task given to him by the Board of Education was to go find land to build a new high school. I know the area out south of town where Aldi's and Circle K, they looked at that land, they had an option to buy. I mean, that's a long, long time ago. And, um, then the bolt thing became available, so then obviously they did that. But, um, I mean, there was a plan not to have Cornerstone. Now, the most iconic building in Worcester is Cornerstone Elementary, Worcester High School. To me, it's Worcester High School. Um, I mean, that's part of our vision of our town. I mean, that's what people see and how beautiful that is. Do you think if we were to vacate there, there might be interest in another entity, taking part in that building?
I, I, I do, Rick. Uh, I mean, obviously I can't guarantee, right? Um, but we have had talks with investment groups, um, that have said that they would have interest in the building. I actually think that it would be, this is just in my opinion, it would be easier to work through the potential of saving the building, um, once we're not in it. Um, you know, I ran into probably the best example I can give was a, uh, real estate firm that was using architect Sol Heller's day out of Canton, but they were actually a real estate firm from, uh, the Philadelphia area, um, that are currently renovating an old, uh, school building in Willoughby. And they came and toured the building, and they were very interested in the building. They thought, uh, because of what you just said, it's iconic, there's a lot of charm and, um, you know, but we really couldn't go a lot farther, um, in conversation as there's 400 kids that go to school there every day, right? Um, and you know, uh, to, to start doing the next level of due diligence and things like that, I think would be hard, um, when there's a what-if for them, right? So, but yes, I have had some conversations with some people and, um, that I think would, would want to continue to explore conversation.
So when we get to the high school and to the junior high or middle school, whatever we call it, then, I mean, those are areas where we kind of balance the socio-economic, socioeconomic part of the community, uh, poverty, race, so we would have that currently in grades, was it grade four? No, five, five through 12.
Yes.
Currently in five through 12.
So if you're at 3 to 5, then you would have, uh, you'd add that group to more equitable, uh, group.
Yeah.
So I mean, those are things to consider.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, as our current, our current, uh, you know, neighborhood school boundaries are not socio-economically equal, um, by any means.
It's nice when that can happen, in my opinion.
So we're grade bandied starting at grade five right now?
Yeah, grade five is when we, all of Worcester comes together.
It's grade bandied.
That's kind of important, I think.
If you, any of the plans that I have here, other than the modulars, all of the plans move it to third grade, right?
Indeed.
Because Cornerstone, the repairs, the new building, the K-5 obviously starts it right away.
Third grade was determined, if I recall, to be also educationally desirable due to like the needs of the third grade reading guarantee and other things, where we kind of like start utilizing resources in a better way at a kind of a significant educational time. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that was part of our thoughts on those data recommendations.
Thank you. I'm always going to take five steps back, okay? I ran for the board because I really truly, like an old person, believe in the power of education. I guess maybe what it meant 50 years ago, which is kind of naive, but that's still what I think about. Education is vital regardless of the channel you take. There's many channels. There's dozens of channels now, which is awesome, but nonetheless, education is vital. And it impacts all of us. It impacts each individual student. Their life can be transformed. It impacts a family because a child can transform their parents' lives in ways, and we could talk forever, but I won't. And then a community benefits, and I think we kind of know that when we look at data, and I'll leave it there. Communities benefit with strong education and are well-educated. So like, I still believe in education, so that's where my comments are going to come from. So we, I voted in favor of the 6-8 plan because I did feel educationally, as an educator, that it had value. I'm now going to say that like three things can be true at the same time. Cornerstone can be a beautiful building with a mind-boggling history and gorgeous nooks where I personally would love to sit with tea and read a book. Like, I think that is true. I think old buildings have charm and value. They do, they do. But it's not just about me or like what I want to, where I want to sit with my tea. So I'm still going to go back to is Cornerstone not just minimally viable, but maximally effective as a school? I'm going to go back there because that's how I made the decision. I'm sorry, this is long, and I still feel the, the issues that I observed when I visited Cornerstone many, many times are kind of still there for me as an educator. And the number one thing that I ranted about endlessly was transition time. It's just like, never going to go away. So I'm bringing the conversation there because I think that's part of what you're asking. What, what is the use and value and importance of Cornerstone? And it has a lot of value, it has a lot of history, it has some interesting use, it has a lot of great things. But I, I just don't, for me still as an educator, I still wonder if there isn't a better learning environment for all students. So I'm going to toss that out and say I'm still, I still personally feel looking at another option has value. As wonderful as Cornerstone is and as historic as it is, I still question it as the best environment. Like, I'll stop for a minute. I can say more.
You know.
I'll stop for a minute.
Along those lines, I struggle financially, thinking through, you know, three grades and a, a 3 through 5 intermediate. With OFCC funding, you're probably 40 million or a little under. And, uh, renovation of Cornerstone equating to three grades is 34 million. You know, when we think about a 5, 6 million dollar difference in all likelihood in total cost for a north of 100-year-old building versus a new build, that's hard for me to stomach as well, to go along with that.
Well, for me, um, oh, are you saying something, Jody? Not yet.
I will, but go ahead.
I bet you will.
Yeah, I'm ready whenever.
I hate to dominate this conversation, or, you know, I mean, having worked here, I know the funds, you know, taxpayer dollars, things that were, that have been going into Cornerstone and some of the other older buildings. I experienced the same thing in a former job that I had where we had to do that. And then obviously that changed and they built new buildings, but that was a necessity. But, um, you know, I just, knowing that many years ago, a good Board of Education, Worcester's always had those, uh, decided that that building wasn't going to be great for the learning environment for kids, whether they're older or younger, whatever. And they did something about it, you know, they bought land, they built a high school, and that worked out really, really well. Everybody still thinks this place is new and it's 30 years old. So, uh, a, at some point, I think we have to quit kicking the can down the road and make a decision, whether it's Board of Education, um, or whomever. And, um, but I for one, I only speak for myself, not for the rest of the board, so you do understand that, um, I would have a hard time voting on something that would, um, spend more money in Cornerstone. Do you know that there's upkeep on buildings, but I feel like that is, um, not a good use of our hard-working community, and it's getting more and more hard-working. Poverty rate rising and, and stuff like that, we see that all the time. But I for one would have a hard time approving, um, I mean, I'll do what the board does, but, um, because I'm a team player, but I would have a hard time approving any kind of ex, large expenditure at that building. So, you know, I don't know what the plan is here, but if you could work to come back to us another time with more detail or other plans or whatever, I don't know. That's just me, so at least you all know how I feel.
Yep. Yeah, and I mean, just along some of the lines that, I mean, Joy talked about. I, I mean, for me, if I look at the options, so first of all, thank you for putting these all together. I mean, I just, I feel like a couple of these are Band-Aids. Um, and I just, I do feel like we're at a point where we have five buildings that we need to be thinking about the future of. And, um, you know, doing, um, like the permanent improvement and repairs to three, I, I personally don't think that's the right approach. Um, I, I'm not a fan of the modular idea. I understand what we're trying to accomplish, but not a fan of our, you know, that, um, for our students. And again, you know, we talk about Cornerstone and the major repairs. Yes, we can, we can invest the money and fix some of the, some of the issues that, that we have there. But I think what Joy was saying, I mean, we talked to the teachers there, and I'm not saying that I'm speaking for all teachers there, but dozens of teachers have said and talked about the implications on the education of, of the kids in that building because of transit time, because of having to move out of rooms. And, you know, there, there's just been a lot of discussion from the teachers. And, and to me, they're the experts, they're the ones in the building every single day. And so I trust their, their judgment on what is best for our students. And so, you know, for me, I would like to, you know, to me, what, what we did before should still be something we consider because I think that was a really good plan of having 6 through 8 behind this building. And then the other options, I think, are great as well. I, I will tell you, I struggle a little bit with the 3 through 5 just because that still leaves us with three aging elementaries, um, and Edgewood. So I feel like that's a short-term, it's a good fix, but it's a short-term fix where we're going to have to come back and think of something else. So those, those are my thoughts, but I, I also, and I have not been shy about saying this. I, I would love for Cornerstone to continue to be a building in our community, but I do not think that it should be a, a school building anymore.
And I think one thing I will say, kind of as I talk about, but I talked about it a lot more in our previous bond conversation. But, you know, I think what kind of what you're trying to say, Joy and Jody, is I think two things that are concerned if you put a lot of money into Cornerstone is it, it still will be a 1920s high school. Um, it will look newer, but it will still be built and structured for students at that time, at those ages. Um, I also think that it's, um, you know, there is, there would be some challenges of no matter how much you put into, um, older things, it's just the same as an old house, right? It, it, it's, it's just not quite the same as, as new. Now, again, they built some really neat old structures, and there is some strength to those too. But I think those would be, um, you know, a challenge that, that we would, you know, I think that's kind of phrasing both, when you think about long-term, uh, as that's, you know, would be some of those concerns from that thing.
Yep. Yeah, and of course, I mean, you know, people renovate old homes. I mean, that, that happens all the time, and again, there's probably interest from, you know, somebody to maybe do that. But is that the right way for us to be spending taxpayer dollars? That's part of what we need to be considering, so.
I'm always like more theoretical, so I'm sorry I do this. You know, like what is my job here on the board? Who is my audience, I guess you can say, right? So am I here for the people that voted for me? Am I here for the teachers? Am I here for the kids? Like, I've thought a lot about that, like what is my job? What is the job of an elected official? Do I, do I chase every carrot? Or do I do what I know is right? Like, this is important to me? So 16% of the people voted no for the last levy and 12% voted yes, I believe, which is, if I'm close and if I'm wrong, I would like to stand corrected. But like, in terms of transparency and integrity, because I, that matters to me personally, so that's why I want to make these comments. 16% of people voted no, and maybe for them, this is a kind of a done deal. Like, we said no, we're done, and I, I completely respect that, but like, the problems are still here again. So I kind of dove into who voted no and why, literally talking to any human body that would talk back to me, many people who grew up in Worcester, all sorts of people. I just don't know if all 16% voted no because they wanted to preserve Cornerstone. I think that a lot of people voted no for very different reasons. And the reason I'm saying that is we have to be creative about our plan going forward to honor the no vote, but then we had 12% of the people that voted yes, who wanted a new school, who wanted to invest in education. And then I guess according to that, 12, what's that, 28? So a large percentage of people didn't vote. And what they, and it's not my job to tell people what they need, but nonetheless, 70% of the people didn't vote, and some of those may be families with children. And I don't know what they know because they didn't vote or want. So why I'm saying this is I want to work through this in a way that's transparent and has integrity, and I want to do the right thing. No one's ever going to get exactly what they want in this kind of circumstance, but that doesn't mean the board is, doesn't have transparency or is not wanting to do the right thing. So that's why I'm stating these numbers and what I'm kind of thinking through and what I believe the obligation is. And for me, my obligation is to do what I think is right, but also what is balanced and fair for all people. So I'm coming back again. We don't know going forward what plan makes the most sense. We don't know if we're going to do a new plan. We don't know how we're going to fund a new plan. No decision is made now, but I'm reaffirming, I feel it's time to not kick the can down the road and to really look at whether or not that's a good learning building. And so with integrity, with consideration both to people who voted yes and voted no, and for the many people who didn't vote and may have a stake in this, I, I firmly believe we have to move forward as difficult as it is. I'm owning my decision. I'm trying to acknowledge, I recognize that there's a vast audience out there and that everyone can't be pleased, but I strongly feel we have to look at something new, whether it's a module, whether it's a new building, whether, I don't know. That, because I kind of want to try to separate that out because I don't want people to feel any assumptions are made or any decisions are made. Cause I haven't made a decision. I'm just trying to answer the question about the one building and should we move to the next step? Like I do that at work a lot. Step by step by step.
And that is a.
Procedurally, I can't get ahead of myself or I'm breaking the law. I'm just here now talking about cornerstone. I don't know what plan I like. But I honestly, and I really, I love the nooks of cornerstone. I do respect it. But I do, I'm strongly saying that and I'm trying to bring out the point that I believe our board is trying to operate with integrity and to listen to all voices.
Well, I, I think, and I mean, I'll take more comments, but if I'm trying to summarize, because I'm trying to think about what's this mean for us? Action steps, right? And as we continue to move forward. What I think I'm hearing is, um, we, obviously we don't know which plan we're choosing. But it doesn't sound like the temporary Band-Aid is even getting any discussion. Modulars, I'm not shocked anyone doesn't want those. I don't want modulars, but we could do it. And I thought it was fair that people would at least know that. Because, um, it is a solution. Not every solution is a good solution, right? You know, you know, based on your feedback, I, I, I don't think continuing, uh, you know, to spend a lot of time on the cornerstone conversation is appropriate. As again, really I go back to the original premise of when I started this meeting tonight is that it, it is time. It is time. We have got to whatever decision we make, we've got to make those decisions. We've got to figure out how we're going to pay for them and we have got to address things, right? I mean, I'll use an example, right? The cornerstone bleachers, they don't work. If we're going to continue to use that building, we need to put new cornerstone bleachers in there, right? And if we're not, we need to know that and we need to have a plan of what we're doing instead, right? It's those kinds of things. We're to that point where I think we have to make those. So if I'm hearing based on what I'm thinking I'll do based on your feedback this evening is at our next meeting, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, have a lot more financial information and implications on the three, four, five, um, the K-five. And I can even try to do some of those on the previous six through eight. Again, re, from a two thousand twenty-five fall lens, which could still include a levy or a cops. You know, one of the things that we never talked about until now was potentially thinking about doing a major project without voter approval. Right? Not saying that we're going to do that, but at least it's now a part of that conversation. So what I'll do, um, and again, if you have other things you would like me to do, please tell me and I'll do them. But I think what I will do for the December meeting, um, is I will, won't be maybe as long a presentation as many slides, but I'll take those three, four, five, K-five and six, eight options. And I will come back with a little more detail on the, the estimate cost probably won't change a lot. Until we get really into the nitty gritty with architects, which costs money, you're probably not, and, and overall those estimates, if we did that, we're talking about like a million to two million dollar swing when we're, they're pretty good at making estimates, right? Like, so my point is if we figured out exactly what we wanted a three, four, five building to look like. It could, it could sway one to two million dollars. It's not going to sway ten million dollars, right? What I want to spend more time on for you is the financial pieces of that, right? Like, so what I think I would really like you to be able to see is, um, more specific details of bond cost. I'll go into detail about what that would actually cost each homeowner as well. I can also go into, um, uh, detail about cops loans and then what Amy, Amy will be a big part of this. We will, um, show you how different choices impact the forecast, right? Cause I think that's, that's going to be really important, right? So whatever decision you make, um, you know, so for example, I think if you said, oh, I really liked the K-five. As we, again, there's pros to it, but it's the most expensive. It's gonna, it's gonna be the, it's gonna show the forecast the worst, right? Doesn't mean it's the wrong plan. It's just, it's going to be the most impactful in the forecast because it's the most expensive, right? And a three through, three through five paid for without our money to start and a loan is going to look the best, right? But I think you need to see those things so that you can start to factor that in. Now, the only thing that I think I could use a little more guidance for now on this, or I guess I'm, maybe I'm just talking out loud to you, is remember the bond timeline. Right? That I said, like, so you don't have to make decisions in December for, but you do if you're going out in May, right? So, I, you know, I, I can work on a resolution for those, not because I think you're going to choose it. I don't know. It kind of sounds like maybe we're leaning towards not doing that. But I don't want to not be prepared. And then through our discussion, you're like, actually I want to do X and I want to ask people for it. Cause again, I, if you, we could wait till November, but if you, that OFCC money ticks, that's the, that's the problem. It's, there's no, the thing that, guys, I think about this stuff every day, most of the day. And there is no perfect solution, as Joy said, right? There are pros and cons to every situation. And, uh, you know, every scenario has things that seem, make it seem interesting and also challenges. So I don't think I really, I'll think through that and I'll think about whether or not, you know, maybe as we're building, as Amy and I are working on building some of those. If something that we feel gives us clarity, we can have it as an availability. And, you know, obviously we could choose to, you know, um, cause you could at the next meeting start to make actually like some voted recommendations based on those things. Or not, kind of, kind of depends as well. Again, this goes into why am I having this conversation with you now and not in January? You know, Bonnie and Clayton's opinion is going to be really important on these things, right? But I can't wait till then because there's a timeline that starts that if I wait till then, I've already taken certain things off the table and that's not fair.
So thanks. You did a great job, but I, what I want, the one thing I, on that three, five. Was there any kind of PI or permanent improvement dedication to those three elementary buildings, which will still be in operation?
There was not today. We, um.
Well, I'm just throwing that out there. Like I mentioned earlier, those are sixty plus years old.
One of the things that Amy and I will talk about too, as best we can for you, is there will be cost savings for this as well, right? So like, now it, we won't have it all figured, but if we can, if we can come back to you and say, here's, here's this K-five building and yeah, it costs this. But here is estimated reductions. So, I mean, I'll use an example right now. If, if we keep Parkview, we're going to spend two million dollars there, not this coming summer, but the next one at least. We got a whole electric process, project that we're going to have to do and a roof project, right? Like right away. You know, and we've got windows in each of those buildings. If we're going to stay in those buildings, they need new HVAC. Okay. It's not, does not make sense to long-term to use window air conditioners in those buildings, right? So those are things that if we do keep those, will be a part of the five-year budget excluding. So like, that's, you know, that's something to think in. Okay. If, if a three through five costs you half of what a K-five does, it's not quite an apples to apples half. Because we will have other expenditures and maybe not some savings. Still doesn't mean that the right decision is the K-five over the three, five. It just means that will be a part of that factor.
Can you, I know this is probably difficult, but I know a lot of the timeline stuff is, was to be, to be determined. Could you provide sort of your best estimates on what timelines look like with various options as well?
Yes, I think in most.
And not today, I mean.
No, but I think to, good question. I think overall, probably two thousand twenty, um, eight. If we make a decision in early spring, if you wait until an election result, uh, probably early two thousand twenty-nine. So sometime it, it takes again, uh, between two and three years to build a building, uh, in a perfect situation. Nobody, it takes, by the time you get design done, it's eighteen months and we wouldn't be done with design. And I mean, I can give you more details, but regardless of any of those plans, that's what that would be. Okay, guys. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. You did great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, thanks. Well, I made a mistake before because I had mentioned that we were moving on to four point zero one. But that's actually, uh, public participation on agenda items. So.
Did we do have one?
Molly.
I suppose publicly participate, but Gabe did such a great job. Hi, um. Ted Hill at seven thirty-five. Uh, first I want to thank Superintendent Tudor and the administration staff for preparing a broad and diverse set of future options for our children's future. I greatly value that work for everyone as well. So please let them make sure that, that everyone's appreciated. I have two points of comment. The first is on the possibility of using earned income tax to service building. Even though I'm a fan of earned income taxes, but it's not funding, though it is recommended for servicing, uh, building bonds. That's because this method is, um, less reliable year to year with its. From, I, I know that the shortfalls, if they occurred, could just be covered from the general fund that we see. But I think there's an optics, uh, point of view to, uh, consider. In particular, uh, needing to cover a shortfall would lead to the public question of why the tax rate had not been set correctly, quote unquote, to avoid such a shortfall. And to avoid some potential public damage or damage to public trust in the future. I would suggest that earned income tax would be better used as a general funding mechanism rather than for servicing bonds. Second point of concern, um, I recognize that the option presented for going to the voters in May is simply the next available time and just sort of, well, the, uh, example that was used on the slide. But the board can also go to voters in November and that wasn't visually depicted in the slide. This sort of implies to me an unnecessary, um, need to rush. I would suggest that it would be inappropriate to take up any resolution on the future of the school district in December when there are two members that are going to be joining the board in, uh, January. Furthermore, levers, levies set in the spring erode public trust. Voters look at November elections like they are for citizenship and for spring votes like they are for partisanship. Deciding our children's future has no place in the spring next to the partisanship. I would remind the board that there is no rush on this. In building terms, construction is measured in years. For bond repayment, it's measured in decades. Take the time, do right by the voters, go to them in November. Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda for the treasurer.
So moved.
Second. Okay, tonight I have the financial report for month end October, thirty-first, um, twenty twenty-five. So looking at revenue right now compared to our forecast, um, we are ahead almost seven hundred thousand dollars. That's really attributed to our state revenue. When we look at unrestricted and restricted, um, some of that is our, our, um, enrollment actually is flat from last year. We are predicting a, a little bit of a decline. So our, uh, unrestricted state revenue was a little bit higher and then our, um, restricted is as well. When we look at expenditures, we're actually favorable just by a little bit on, in that regard. Salaries and benefits are over a little, you know, by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. But in our purchase services, we tend to, um, predict a little bit higher on purchase services because, um, if you remember, that's where we pay for a lot of our kids that go out of district. And we never really know, um, how many kids we're going to have in a year. So when you look at the, um, you know, effect of that, we're really trending favorable right now by about seven hundred thousand dollars, um, against the forecast. And I have started working on, as you remember, the forecast next one I'll be bringing in February because they've changed the timeline on that. So I'll be able to present that to you at the February, um, board meeting. As far as donations tonight, um, we have donations to the girls, boys, basketball, um, teams. Several donations to General's Closet and then donation to the middle school PBIS. And then, um, the, uh, Worcester Women's Service Club donated, um, money towards hats, gloves and reasonable bottles for students. That is my consent agenda.
Any additions or corrections? Okay.
Uh, Goodright.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Kuzma.
Yes.
Kleinhead.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, motion to approve the consent agenda for the superintendent.
So moved. Second.
All right. Thank you, guys. It is a lengthy consent agenda, but most of it is, um, policy, first and second reads, but I'll go through things here a little bit. Actually, at this time of year, pretty happy not to have any certified resignations there. We'll take that. A couple, uh, substitutes and a long-term substitute, uh, really excited about Zoe taking that spot. We really needed that. And Zoe is actually a Worcester grad that is graduating, um, from Baldwin Wallace, uh, here, um, in about a week. So we're excited for her to be able to take that. On the classified side, no resignations as well. Always a good month when that happens. And then you'll see some, um, positions there that were hired, mostly substitutes. The one, um, sorry, I'm getting a little close here. Anna Simley, she is the new payroll person. Elaine Bateson retired. She retired a few months ago. She's still working, but she put her notice in and so we have a little cross train time, just a couple of weeks, but Anna, who already has experience in payroll, will be coming, uh, to us, uh, for that. The key club, key club bus agreement is actually just to, uh, ensure that both us and the career center have the right insurance language. We, uh, share a bus with the career center for kids to go, um, on trips and things like that. And so this makes that mutual when their key club drives or our key club drives or we're covered in that. Uh, softball, uh, overnight trip, um, any overnight trips we always bring to you this time. This will be it to, to New Hop, uh, which we have other teams go to as well. It's a great team bonding experience for them. The wheelchair basketball MOU is actually just a continuation. This did not get in the negotiated agreement, not actually because either side I think was open to it. Uh, to be honest, uh, I forgot to, to take it to negotiations to put it, put it in. We actually had the MOU, um, a few, uh, we've had it a few, the, the few, past few years, um, uh, because we've been trying to build our program. When I say build a, we have a great program, but the, uh, followaways have always coached. We've loved, we want to get that to where they, they really want to move on and continue to grow the sport. And if, uh, you know, and so we need to continue in our program. And so this is just to memorialize so we can continue that for the next three years until, uh, we will negotiate and put it in the contract. I have, uh, strategic planning. A few months ago, I did, uh, our strategic plan presentation here on our, uh, finalizing our current strategic plan. And this is a proposal to engage with the Impact Group, uh, who helped us last time to do strategic planning again. I feel very strongly about strategic planning. I think it is, um, uh, something that, uh, really creates the compass of your district and helps in your decision-making. And, uh, Impact Group did a great job helping us last time. They lead the focus groups. It, it really provides a little bit more organic conversation. If I'm leading the focus group, sometimes the teachers might not want to share exactly the things that they should and, and, and I want them to share as comfortably as they will when somebody else is leading a focus group. And that's same for any group. I'm just using them as an example. We had to make one revision on the school calendar next year. Uh, we just, the, the parent teacher conference dates in February were not aligned to the week of parent, uh, to the, uh, to the flex day. And so that was actually just an admission. It was not actually a change. We just needed to put that on the calendar. We are going to get some free, um, AI, um, professional development, uh, through the ESC. Uh, and so this is the agreement, uh, through that grant so that we can do that. Alex, uh, Gary is spearheading that. And then the Applewood agreement is for a student that, um, you know, is under our responsibility that, um, requires their care and education. Lots of second readings. We kind of went over a lot of these, uh, last month. They're, they're primarily just, uh, you know, kind of, uh, keeping us up to date with law, with attendance changes, um, and academic changes. There also are some first reads on here. Um, but also some of the things in the se, um, second read are like federal programs and how we, um, document our federal funds and, and things like that. That's the Edgar. Options. That's Amy's department that does that. We have some transportation things just related to an update in law and then also some technical. update in law and then also some technical corrections, um, uh, just to, mainly because Mrs. Richard, uh, her name hasn't changed, but her, uh, title had changed a couple of years ago and that needed to change on our, on our board forms. So that's a technical correction. So even though it's nothing more than that, I still need to bring it to you. Um, so those are, um-
At least you can tell us about it. We don't need to boat on those, right?
They're just part of the consent. They are, yeah. Um, so those are a bunch of first reads. And then at the, the very end, I will say one other first read that we do have is a cash balance policy. Um, most districts in the state of Ohio have adopted one and it's being recommended by our auditors to do. And it really, it doesn't pigeonhole you exactly on what you decide to do when your cash balance gets to a certain level, but it provides and creates some parameters. Basically, it says after we'd have less than 90 days cash on hand, we should start to consider how we're going to either reduce or, or get additional funds, right? Cash on hand, remember, is, think of it this way. So if you have a $60 million budget and you have $60 million in the bank, then you have 365 days of cash on hand, right? If you have $1 million in the budget on a 60 million, yeah, you have five days of cash on hand, right? So 90 days is, you know, kind of an amount that's pretty common. And so that would be in first read. So some of these are second reads, second and final where they will become policy. Others are first reads that would come back to you next month.
And another reason for the, and I'm gonna, I'm not going to get this all right, but there, with some legislation that's out there, there's a requirement that we, there, there potentially is a requirement that we will have, we have to have a strategic plan, right? Along with this cash balance policy-
You do, well, we do have to have a one plan.
What am I thinking of?
I think what you're, we're-
What am I referring to?
Go ahead, Amy.
I was just going to say, they're recommending really like that you're, like you have a cash balance policy and it, you know, kind of aligns with your, you have a strategic plan and a facilities plan. Yes. And you kind of bring those all together and have them aligned. Yeah. And what's that for? And it's, is that the state requiring that or? Um, no, I think it's just really with, I think, some of the funding things in place. Um, you know, that, for instance, if you have a cash balance policy, knowing that if you, like ours, if you go over 150 days, we're not going to just sit on that money. We have a spending plan. So like, either your strategic plan dictates that or your facility plan might dictate that. Okay. Thanks for clarifying. So I, I, I think when, when some of these things that are part of the, you know, tax reform and, and maybe some of the power, if you will, that the Budget Commission could have, if we have these things in place and we know, they know we have a plan for the money, they're not going to take away our tax dollars.
Yeah, that's a great point.
That, that's what I was thinking for clarifying.
I, I think, I think incorrectly, but there is a perception, not just in, like, not Worcester, but just around the state, that, you know, districts are hoarding money, which is obviously not the case. And so really what Amy's talking about is showing your purpose of the money in case those kind of changes, you know, occur to where maybe they do start to take some things, you know, away. And, you know, with property tax reform, which, you know, I do, you know, property taxes are high and I think there's some things that needs to be evaluated. Now, you know, it's kind of interesting, one of the things that, you know, we learn a lot about that is, you know, currently, right now, the average right now at, around the state is that the state is providing 32% of the cost to educate, right? Um, 20 years ago, that was almost 50%. So where's the extra money coming from? Well, it's coming from local, it's coming from local revenues, right? Um, and so, you know, that's, that's all part of the, the challenge that they're going to have to continue to work out.
Any other questions? Yes.
Starcher-
Yes.
Austin-
Yes.
Kuzma-
Yes.
Kleinhead.
Yes.
Okay, so we are moving on to, I see we have to move, jump down to public participation on non-agenda items.
There are, I don't believe there are any-
Molly?
On non, not on non-agenda.
Nope, okay. Okay, um, comments and questions? Yes. You're up.
Man, I, I warned, I warned Callan before we started. I felt bad. I'm like, this has got a chance to really be a, a long one. So I, he's a good, patient guy. So thanks for hanging with us.
Of course. So yeah, um, fall sports seasons have just concluded and winter sports are officially up and running. Uh, practices have started and programs and events are just around the corner. Um, NHS, NHS members are volunteering all over the community and will be ringing bells for the Salvation Army later this month. Um, with Best Buddies, Best Buddies previously had a Friendsgiving event where students enjoyed pancakes, sausage, and good company. Um, they gave, they gave thanks to friendship and enjoyed one another. Best Buddies is also, uh, has an upcoming fundraiser this Sunday. It is a quarter auction and it will be held at First Presbyterian Church here in town. Um, General Leadership Council, the General's Leadership Council met on Wednesday, the 19th, and participated in leadership activities put on by, uh, our guest speaker Sarah and Ryan, or Ryan Ozar, excuse me, uh, who are faculty members at the College of Worcester. Um, the GLC will be planning a group project to be completed prior to February when Worcester High School will host the OCC Leadership Event, um, to present on what each school group has done this year for service projects. And, uh, we want to wish all winter athletes and coaches the best as their season kickoff. Um, Drama Club, Charlie Kirk, or Charlie and the Chocolate Factory is now playing and they performed last weekend. And, and their last chance to see it is this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Uh, Science Club, they just completed a leaf chroma, chromatography, I think is how you pronounce it, project at their meeting last week. They used every, everyday household materials like rubbing alcohol and coffee filters to pull pigments out of leaves. And they will be meeting, they, their next meeting is in December. Um, Green Club, uh, recently focused on educating their members about simple ways to live more sustainably in their everyday lives. During their last meeting, they discussed easy habits that can make a meaningful environmental impact. And they are now working towards organizing a community park cleanup to continue supporting the cleaner, a cleaner and local, cleaner local environment, excuse me. NAACP has been, has had a few meetings and they have formed a membership committee and are making preparations to host some events for recruitment, as well as preparations for Black History Month celebrations. Um, for those interested, they meet before and after school on Tuesdays and have a general assembly, a general assembly meeting on the last Tuesday of the month in the public library. Student Council is preparing some events for over the winter. They have started a chain of gratefulness for students to write something that they are thankful for and make a chain out of it. Um, they're thinking of plan, they're thinking of plans for Winter Spirit Week and the mini pep rally, pep rally section at Rise Day. They're going to work with Officer Abel for the stuff, for the stuff the cruiser event. Freshmen are currently vetting for new representatives for their class. Juniors continue their fundraising for prom and other plannings. Um, seniors are doing more events for their class and sophomores are preparing for winter formal. And that's all.
Thank you, Callan. I appreciate it. Now, you didn't talk much about the lip dub there, I don't think. Did you mention lip dub?
Oh, yeah.
Because not only that, but I think you were, you know, kind of a star of the show.
Yeah.
Right?
I might have been there a couple of times.
That was pretty fun, right?
Yeah, it was very fun.
So, yeah, that was, that was, that was a great thing that, uh, we do, we do every couple of years, right? I think.
Yeah.
So, awesome. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I don't, is it out yet to where like everybody can see it?
Yeah.
I've seen it, but it's out.
It's on social media.
Yeah. Yeah.
It was really great.
Yeah, super fun.
Charlie and the Char, I keep saying Charlie and the Charlie Factory. Charlie and the Chocolate Factory was really fantastic, too. Went last weekend and, I mean, not only the people on stage, but all those behind the set, the orchestra, it was well-done.
Yeah, it's incredible.
And they were selling candy in the lobby, which I was really surprised by. It was a nice touch. So, thank you.
Okay. Um, future board meetings. Uh, anybody else have any comments?
Um, only thing I would, um, say, just as a, uh, two, well, one correction, one reminder. The, we are not actually, it's not on here yet, but we are not, I am not going to recommend an executive session tonight. The other is next month, this is just a procedural thing, we have to pick a person to run the meeting, the organizational meeting, right? Um, because we technically don't have a president, um, at the organizational meeting. So that will be on the agenda for you guys to nominate and recommend someone to run the meeting. Um, and then we will have the organizational meeting, uh, you know, obviously with Bonnie and Clayton there.
I second that, Cody. I second that.
Oh, yeah. I think historically, not that we're making the decision now, but I think historically, we've just had the president continue that.
There is, but there is, yes, we have, but there's board action.
But we have to go through the formal, yes, we have to go through the formal steps to do that. Yeah.
So, yeah, sorry about that, Rick.
My turn?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so Tuesday, December 16th, we have two meetings, a special meeting, um, at 3:30. I believe that's like the midpoint for administrator, superintendent and treasurer, um, evaluation. And then later that evening at, um, 6 o'clock, we have our regular, uh, board meeting. And you have work to do between now and then.
Correct. Yes, I do.
All right. Um, and then, um, we need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
Hey, Goodright-
Yes.
Starcher-
Yes.
Austin-
Yes.
Kuzma-
Yes.
Kleinhead.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.